Our three districts will probably be Cheyenne Street, Ninth Street intersection. After that they get, that may be Goldenwood, I don't know. Dustin, you ready? You ready, sir?
I'm ready.
Okay. Well, I got 5:30, so we will go ahead and call the Special Assessment Commission for August 31st, 2020 to order. I'll let the record show that Commissioners Shealy, Commissioner Anderson, and Commissioner Brownlee are all present. And John, do you want to give a brief overview of the assessment process for everybody out in the audience, so they understand kind of what our role here in this whole process is?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, tonight's process is, it is, I'll start from a very high level. It is a public hearing in which people who are proposed to be assessed can bring forward either a written objection or a verbal objection to the Special Assessment Commission. And I'll start from a very high level and then move to the more detailed. If they are presenting an objection, they should state their name, property, address, and location. It is helpful if the objection is for a property that's actually within the district. At last, last time we met, we had a number of people who were making a protest or an objection that didn't actually own property within the district. There's a lot of districts tonight, and each district, the city engineer will bring up a map, so that you'll be able to see if in fact you own property within the district. That's helpful for the record. If you disagree with the decision that's made by this board, it then goes to the City Commission. This board does not create the improvement district, so at the city, at the beginning of the process, the City Commission creates an improvement district, and that is the boundaries that the city engineer will show you for each district. The City Commission then determines what the nature of the improvement will be, lets out the contract, the contracts are publicly bid, constructed, and then they send a notice to the Special Assessment Commission determining amount to be assessed and the area within it to be assessed. And so, the Special Assessment Commission has no control over the total amount that's assessed in each district, or the size or shape of the boundaries, those are set by the City Commission. And so, what the Special Assessment Commission does have authority to do is determine the amount that's going to be levied on each property within the district. They can't change the total amount within the district, but they can change individual properties. But keep in mind, if you lower one person's assessment, that can cause other parcels within the district to go up. It might be slight, it might be significant. And so, as we go through tonight, what we'll try to do is the process is we'll have the city engineer, we'll put up a map showing what the district is. At the first meeting that we had regarding this, we put together a whole packet and a presentation. My understanding is that packet and presentation is available online, so if people have questions, more detailed questions, they can certainly refer to that material that's on the city website. What'll happen is, the Special Assessment Commission will open a public hearing on each item, take objections, close it, and then make a decision. Once they close the public hearing portion, the Special Assessment Commission should deliberate, and you shouldn't take any additional comments regarding that district, so that we have a nice, clean record. Once again, if you're not satisfied with tonight's decision, you can go to the City Commission, and if you're not happy with the City Commission's decision, you can appeal to a district court. And so, I will be here, as will the city engineer, all night to assist you, assist the commission as you go through the different, different districts. And given that there's a lot of people here, we'll try to, perhaps if somebody's district is done, they, it won't be readdressed after, unless it's tabled, but there will likely be a decision on all the districts tonight.
Thank you, John. There is agendas available. What we'll do tonight is we'll take the districts in order that they are in the agenda. Again, if you have comments for the commission, we'll ask you to come to the podium, mainly because we can hear you a lot better, and we need your name and your address, so we want to make sure that you're in the district. So with that, we'll start with the first district that is on our agenda, and that is District 2241, the Fifth Street West Extension. Dustin, you want to give us a brief overview of that project?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and for the audience too. My name is Dustin Scott, I'm the city engineer. As our attorney, Mr. Shockley, alluded to, I will at least lead off each district with bringing up some of the project information, and then turn it back over to the Special Assessment Commission for convening the public hearing. So, District 2241, Fifth Street West Extension. And I am going to also go through a packet here, this, all of this information, just want to reiterate, it is available on our city website, and so this very packet that I'm scrolling through here is, is taken from, from the Special Assessment website. So, Fifth Street West, it's a local improvement project. When I say local, the assessment boundary was limited to just an area that benefits from the street extension here. Fifth Street is a road that's just to the west of Cheyenne Street, roughly at 29th Avenue. It was an extension, as requested by a developer, to connect Fifth Street and 29th Avenue intersection, basically a roadway all the way up over to Cheyenne Street. So, the assessment district boundary here, you can see on this map, the dashed bold black line here represents the district boundary. And in, at the end of the day, when we levied, when we met back in June to review these special assessments, if the Special Assessment Commission recalls, the assessments were really only levied over a small portion of this area, as basically the lots on either side of that street. Now, I'm going to scroll through some of the pictures again. I apologize for some of the changes in size here, but this information is also on our website, and can be looked at a little closer later. These are just construction photos that I'm scrolling through here, in the effort of time, I'm not going to pause too much on here, but again, just wanted to show a quick visual to everybody, the snapshot of what is available as, as far as information. This map that you see here is sheet from our construction plan set, so. Guess with that, I will turn it over to the commission for any questions.
Okay. We'll open up the public hearing now on District 2241. Does anybody wish to speak on District 2241? One more time, does anybody wish to speak on District 2241? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve District 2241.
I'll second. Everybody, all in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. With that, we'll move on to District 2243. Dustin?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chairman. So, District 2243 is a regional project. When I say regional, now they, a boundary here is going to include a lot more properties. Specifically, this project located Ninth Street East and 13th Avenue East intersection. The project started construction in 2017, and getting to the boundary map here, this map is a little more challenging to, to see. Again, the bold black dashed line is the assessment district boundary. The project location here, there's more of a gray hatched out area. Ninth Street and 13th Avenue is where this cursor is hovering, and I apologize if you can't, if you can't see that on the monitors. Essentially, the boundary extended a mile south of 13th Avenue, and then a half a mile north of 13th Avenue, up to 7th. And the region, reason for that is being consistent with previous arterial roadways that have been under construction, for example, Main Avenue. The assessment district boundary for Main Avenue was about a half a mile each way, terminated at 7th Avenue, and so, to not have overlap, we had the north boundary of this district at 7th Avenue, the thought process there again, so that there isn't a property owner paying for more arterial roads than other property owners. We would have went a half a mile to the south to be following that same suit, however, as you can see from the city map, there are no other arterials, east-west arterials, and so, if we would have concluded at a half mile point to the south, there are significant properties between 17th Avenue and the interstate that would effectively never receive an east-west arterial street assessment. So, so that's where, again, little, little unique boundary here, but for the most part, also consistent with past districts. The other information that's in the packet, there's a color-coded map here that shows all the preliminary assessments that have been allocated based on the June Special Assessment Commission meeting. There was public, there was actually a few different public input meetings prior to construction. You just see a snapshot of one of those informational pieces from, from those early outreach meetings. And I think later down, there's again, some more construction-related photos, but I'll pause here on the boundary map and turn it back over to the chairman.
And, Mr. Chairman, just for public information, the amount that's proposed to be assessed is the principal amount, and that can be spread over 25 years. And so, for example, the average assessment was a thousand dollar, $1,006.11. That's the total principal amount that's spread over the course of 25 years, so it's not $1,000 per year, it's whatever a thousand plus interest spread over 25 years is.
Could everyone hear that? There's a couple people that...
Sorry. The amount that's proposed to be specially assessed is the principal amount, and that's spread over 25 years. So, for example, the average amount assessed for this district is $1,000, or $1,006.11. That can be spread over 25 years, and so that's the principal amount, so whatever a thousand dollars at the applicable interest rate is over 25 years. So, it's not, you're not being asked to pay $1,000 per year, it's spread over the course of 25 years.
Okay. Fellow commissioners, there was one correction to our calculations done in June. There was a replat, I believe, of some condo units, which would mean that we would spread some specials on the same philosophy that we did on those ones that we missed, and so those will go up, the ones that we missed, and everybody else's then will drop in pretty small amount. I mean, we're talking less than a dollar on the rest of the properties that's in the unit, but we do want to make sure that every property that's in the assessment district that needs to be assessed got an assessment for that one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I should have elaborated on this before I turned it back over, but very specifically, there's a condo townhome development known as Woodland West. It's between Sixth Street East and Prairie Parkway. In the original list that was prepared and published, there were a few of these parcels that were not treated as condos, and so what we did is, we went back and recalculated all of this area in blue here, and treated everybody as a condo lot, which, just to summarize that process, we basically take this entire area, determine the amount of equivalent units, and then divide it back over the number of parcels in here. And so, effectively, the change actually reduces the overall equivalent unit, so I believe when we published the list of assessments, a single-family residential property was getting a 1,600, or I'm sorry, $1,006.11 assessment. I believe now the, that will change to $1,005.72 if the commission approves based on, on this recommendation. And then, of course, the, the properties within this condo area will have an adjustment of a few hundred dollars up or down, depending on if they were originally treated as a condo or not, so.
Okay. With that, we'll open up the public hearing on, the public portion on District 2243. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to District 2243? Yes, sir, please step up to the podium, and then your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Keith Murray. I'm at 1282 Sixth Street East in West Fargo here. I was concerned, how is the, you've already covered the total, and how do they cover the, per property? How is it assessed for property?
Okay. What we do as a commission is we have several different ways to allocate the cost per properties. Either we use the square footage that's withheld in the whole district, so we divide by the total construction, by the total square footage, and then, of course, we come up with that much per square foot, and then we just multiply that by the square footage that's in each lot. So, if it comes up to a dollar a square foot, and then your lot has 100 square feet, you get a $100 assessment. That's one method. On streets, we'll use linear footage of the street in front and the properties, and then we also use what we call an equivalent unit, which is, again, we take what's the average size of a lot, so many square feet, and that becomes one equivalent unit. And what that does is it kind of equals, tries to equal out some of these irregularities in lot sizes, because there's some really big lots, and there's some really small lots. And on street projects especially, the size of your lot isn't an overriding factor in, you know, the cost and how we allocate it. But that's the three methods mainly that we use to allocate the costs within the district.
Okay, so then, it's per square foot, okay. And I can, I can live with that. How is that affected per property, though? Okay, say, now I'll just use my home for an existence, or an example. I, we're the last house on the block, and then there's a great chunk that's a park right next to us. How does that assessed into the, the whole process?
Okay, so...
Is the park considered part of this, this whole assessment?
Yes. Every property within that assessment district, whether it's owned by the school, whether it's owned by the city, or whether it's owned by the park, gets an assessment. The only properties we can't assess are federally owned properties, because you can't tax the federal government. But otherwise, parks, schools, and cities all get an assessment.
Okay. And was, part of your, your answer earlier, was, was it assessed on the value of the properties, only on the square footage and where it pertains to the assessments?
Right. It's not based on the value of the property, it's based on a square footage or an equivalent unit. So, let's say a single lot is one equivalent unit. If the park property is 10 lot sizes, they would get 10 equivalent units.
So, it's one to one, basically?
Yep.
Okay. And now, how is the property being assessed? Does that have any bearing on the disabled veterans qualifications to that?
Again, we don't assess people, we assess property. So, the ownership of the property, whether it's by a senior citizen, a veteran, or anything else, from our job as an assessment, assessment commission to assess dollars on the property, we only look at property. Now, if there's programs out there that, you know, veterans can apply for, for payments on taxes or specials, I'm not aware of those, but as far as the ownership of the property through the assessment committee, that's not a factor to us. It's just the size that we look at.
Okay. Even though the, the values have been assessed lower through your own organizations, through, through the city?
Yep. I mean, again, we don't look at the value of the property.
Just the size.
We just look at the size.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else wish to speak to 2243?
Good evening. I'm Jane Cornell, and I live at 1457 Heatherwood Court. And you were talking about condo associations. When I looked up on this website, I saw that it was $1,611. Does that, that's one payment, or you can spread it out in 25 years, correct?
That is, yes, you could prepay it and not pay any interest, and if you have any questions about payments, the finance director's here. You can talk, talk to him later. Or it could be spread over 25 years, and I, just off the top of my head, I suppose that's less than $100 a year.
About $100 a year.
It's less than that. I don't know what it would be, but it might be like 60 or something.
Okay, okay. Then, the next question I saw on there, they had Heatherwood Estates. Can you explain what they were? You know, I tried to find, we're in Charleswood Number Four, but I couldn't find that on your list of assessments, other than I could find Heatherwood Estates. Is that what you consider Heatherwood Court, right off of Ninth?
I'm not sure which properties are in the Heatherwood.
It's all listed under, you know, your assessment improvement district of 2243. But I was seeing two different, are you treating condos different?
So, maybe I'll, I'll explain how we assess condo townhome lots. The Century Code gives guideline on that, and very specifically with, with yours, and I'll zoom in on the map, and I hope you can see the screen here, but...
Yes. There's five buildings, and there's 20, there'd be 20 condos then.
Okay, yep. So, what we would do is, we would take the area of this entire parcel.
Okay.
And if, for example, that was one acre, that's 45,000 square feet, generally, one equivalent unit is going to equal 10,000 square feet, so it's going to be about four and a half equivalent units on this entire parcel. We would take that, and then to spread that over the, if there's 20 units, we would spread it over the 20 units. If there's five units, we'd spread over the five units. And so, in some cases, some condo properties end up with less than one equivalent unit, and then some properties, the way it works out is, it'll be, it could be over one, but we don't assess beyond one equivalent unit. So, for an arterial roadway project, maybe to explain that a little bit is, all single-family residential structures are going to receive a one regardless of size unless they are over two acres. And so, for the most part, all single-family lots, whether it's a quarter acre up to, up to two acres, are going to get one unit. In the case of these condo developments or townhome developments, depending on the density within a given area of that parcel, starts to dictate then if that, if each unit will get one or less than one. But we will not go over one. And in this particular case, it appears that taking the area divided by the number of units, we ended up with, each unit is still getting a one, one equivalent unit. Whereas, there are other condo properties that are a little more dense, and they would get, again, it's just based on the math, but some get a .6 equivalent units.
Okay, well, I saw two different numbers, and under Heatherwood, Heatherwood Estates, I don't know if that's what you're considering our condo unit, but when I looked on these figures for this project, there was, for Heatherwood Estates, it was $754.88.
Okay, well, the, the one at 1445 Heatherwood Court?
1457.
You're at 1457?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this one at 1457, I'm pulling up the assessment page here, for 2243, $1,006.11.
And then for the Cheyenne, one is?
Yep, and then for District 2244, there's a pending assessment of $2,006.99.
Okay.
From answering that?
Thanks. Yep.
Anyone else? Mr. Markport?
You do that Mr. stuff, that's fine. No, Jim, so, anyway. Steve Markport, 725 15th Avenue East. I've been there before, and I see one of the city commissioners sitting behind me back here, and a couple things here, as far as this goes, it goes back to the same thing. And I've been at city commission meetings, and they say, got to come to this meeting, we come here, and they say, can't change it, because you guys are going to do what you're doing, you got to go back to the city commission meeting. So, it's kind of like, keep running back and forth in between, and nothing seems to happen. One thing I, I'm concerned about this, and I've expressed my opinion on this before, is that Ninth Street and, or, yeah, Ninth Street and 13th Avenue is our major arterial route, okay? And I don't know if there should be more money coming from tax dollars there, or from sales tax, I should probably say, or from a general thing, because there are not too many people in West Fargo that don't use that intersection. The other part about the intersection is when they redid it, they didn't plan it very well, because I live on 15th Avenue, and we can't use 15th. Last week, on Thursday afternoon, I tried to go south about 10 after 5:00, it took me 20 minutes to get from, first of all, to get onto 15th Avenue, it was blocked, to get to the interstate. And when I looked in my rearview mirrors, I'm going with the VIDOC, I could still see the traffic backed up there. So, that's kind of an issue there, that's another thing there. But I think in that situation, there's, some of that money has to go, come to other places. Back to what they talked about, I can pay this over 25 years. You're absolutely right. I think it's misleading people, though, that if I wait to pay this over 25 years, I'm going to pay double what I'm being assessed today, with the taxes on it, okay? I'm going to pay double on that. So, all of a sudden, I'm getting, getting hit for, well, now I got, I got a great decrease here right now, let's see, 28, 30, 39 cents, so it'll be a little less, but right now, because I'm also getting hit with another one, but I got 37.05 is what I'm, what I'm being assessed for. So, with that in mind, I'd be paying over $7,000 if I wait for the, for the thing. So, I think people need to be aware of that, just saying, oh, wait, you have to pay it right now, you can pay it over 25 years. So, I think that's a little misleading in that situation. Once again, I, you know, we're starting to tax people, and veterans and things like these, you know, I'm not there yet, but before too long, I'm going to be there. I don't want to be in a situation that I can't afford to live in my house because of the taxes and assessments that go there, okay? I think that's important, and you guys have a responsibility. Once again, as I said, I don't know if you're getting paid, or if somebody just threw you in this situation, but in that situation, you have, you have the responsibility, the citizens of West Fargo. Where does that money come from, okay? Where do these developers, hey, let's propose it and put it on everybody else, maybe the developer has to take some of that? Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Just for the, just wanted to note, the city did, there's 750,000 that were contributed from other sources through this district, and then in addition, the city put 223,000 of the bond premium towards the district, so resulted in a buy-down of the district by about a million dollars. So, other funds are being contributed, just, there's a lot of projects, and there's a limited number of sales tax dollars to spread over everything.
In addition, there was some funding from NDOT as well, correct?
Yes, there was $1,725,000 contributed from DOT.
So, the total project cost is about 6.7 million, and the assessment ended up being 4.3, so there was a significant amount that was put in from NDOT as well as the city.
Anybody else wish to speak to District 2243?
Yeah, my name is Leroy Richard, and I have some property on 734 13th Avenue. It's, it's a business that a young lady runs. She's been there for just about 20 years now, and...
Once again, I, you know, we're starting to tax people and veterans and things like these, you know, I'm not there yet, but before too long, I'm going to be there. I, I don't want to be in a situation that I can't afford to live in my house because of the taxes and assessments that go there. Okay? I think that's important and you guys have a responsibility. Once again, as I said, I don't know if you're getting paid or if somebody just threw you in this situation, but in that situation, you have a, you have the responsibility, the citizens of West Fargo. Where does that money come from? Okay? Where do these developers, hey, let's propose it and put it on everybody else, maybe the developer has to take some of that. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair? Um, just for the, uh, just wanted to note, the city did, uh, there's seven hundred and fifty thousand that were contributed from other sources through this district. And then in addition, the city, uh, put, uh, two hundred and twenty-three thousand of the bond, uh, premium towards the district. So it resulted in a buy-down of the district by about a million dollars. So other funds are being contributed, just, there's a lot of projects and there's a limited number of sale tax dollars to spread over everything.
In addition, there was some funding from N D, DOT as well, correct?
Yes, there was one million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars contributed from DOT.
So the total project cost is about six point seven million and the assessment ended up being four point three. So there was a significant amount that was put in from N D, DOT as well as the city.
Anybody else wish to speak to District twenty-two forty-three?
Yeah, my name is Leroy Richard and I, um, have some property on seven thirty-four Thirteenth Avenue. It's a, it's a business that a young lady runs. Uh, she's been there for just about twenty years now. And, uh, you know, the thing that happens with, with a lot of these assessments is that they can't kind of get passed on. And I think everybody kind of knows that. You know, here's a young lady that's trying to make a living doing what she's doing and running a, a very nice business and taking care of the property very nicely. And so she's got a commitment and we've, we've tried to help her as much as we can. Um, through the pandemic thing, for every week that she was down, we ate her rent. Because we just felt that we couldn't afford to ask her to keep paying rent and, um, she wouldn't have been able to do it, period. So when we do some of these things, you know, first of all, I'd really like to see what improvements, you know, now this is Ninth Street and Thirteenth Avenue, right? The, the busy, busy intersection down here. Is there any place where you can go and look as to what improvements are they making to that intersection? Because there's nothing in here that tells me what they're doing.
Well, yeah, I mean, the city engineer would have much more information on the actual project itself.
Well, it'd be kind of nice to know what, what improvements are we making.
Again, so when they start the project, which is usually several years before it comes to this commission, that's when they outline the scope of the project. They're either going to widen it, add turn lanes, whatever they did, uh, the engineers certainly has all the information on the scope of the project. But I believe on that project, they widened the road, they added turn lanes to it, uh, new lights. It was a fairly big project. They said it was six million dollar project, so it was a fairly substantial project that was
Well, I think it would help your cause if, if you'd at least tell us what you're going to do with the money. Just don't come to us and ask us for X number of dollars and say, well, we're going to do a project. Well, what is it? What are you doing? I'd like to know what we're getting for the money, okay?
Mr. Chairman, maybe if I, um, to explain the project, uh, back in twenty seventeen, construction began. It was, we widened the road. So if, if you're operating a business right there, I, I imagine, um, you, you probably saw some of the construction activity. Uh, but essentially it was an expansion of that intersection. It, uh, now has, went from, uh, single turn lanes, for example, to dual turn lanes. Uh, we added a, a lane of traffic on, on Ninth Street going northbound. And so it was, it was an, uh, an expansion of that intersection just to increase, uh, increase, uh, traffic capacities and enhance safety and so on and so forth. But the improvements are already made. And so I don't know if, if your question is relating to what is coming, uh, nothing else is coming there. The improvements have already been made and paid for. And so that's where we're at the special assessment process now.
In other words, this is all after the fact?
Correct. The, the, those improvements are done, yes. And so once the improvements are done, is when the, uh, the special assessments are then levied. And, and I can defer that explanation back over to the city attorney, but that's, that's kind of the explanation he gave at the start of the meeting.
My, my way of doing business and the way you're doing business is a little different. I mean, you know, and maybe every, maybe every municipality does the same thing. They go out and do a project and they spend a bunch of money and then they come back and say, oh, by the way, you guys got paid for this. We already spent the money. You know, if they're going to do something like that, you know, I didn't realize when I walked in here that we were looking for an assessment on projects that have already been done. I thought this was a new project. How many people in here thought it was a new project?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment? Long before this process ever gets to the special assessment committee, what happens is the city commission receives numerous, um, the commission has to do numerous approvals of all of this. Like for this one DOT funding, so they had to approve, accepting DOT funding. They had to approve all the engineering reports, they had to approve the go-out for bids. All these things are put out and if it's a street project, then we have a, we have several public hearings and there's opportunity for public protest before the project ever starts. So there are numerous times for citizen engagement and for information and ev- everything we have goes out. We have generally in the paper, we have it online. Um, we try and get as much information out as we can. Clearly, we need to do better. Um, but we do have several, it's a long, long process before construction ever starts on a project. And it's made clear at the very beginning that this will be a special assessment district. And so that's how we try and relay it out to the citizens so they can be aware that this is a pending thing that might, that will be coming. We can't estimate the cost, um, exactly at the beginning because we don't really know what the cost is going to be until after we accrue it, until we accept bids, until we accept bids. And once we, if the commission approves setting, accepting bids, then we have an idea. Because still, if they run into something we didn't know about, it could be more. But then we set out, we put pending special assessments out there so people can be aware that, hey, this project is coming. If you haven't heard about it during the commission meetings, be aware it's coming.
Do you communicate, I mean, you, you send out a letter?
In the past, in the past, we have not. We have changed our process and they're, like for a street improvement project, letters will go out at the beginning because there's the opportunity for protest. Um, we, our process is changing so that we can get more information out to the public. The majority of our information is on our website and there's a spot you can go into to log in so that if you're going to, so that you can receive alerts for special assessments.
How many people here go to the city website just to see what's going on?
You can sign up for alerts and that's what I'm getting at.
That's kind of the thing of the past where they said, you know, the conversation wasn't very active between the people who weren't aware of what was going on, not very true. I've been to the meetings, but they're like, yes, it's probably going to be early, probably lots of people on the website.
Well, I think there's room for improvement, okay?
Anybody else wish to speak on District twenty-two forty-three?
Yes, I have just one question. When, oh, sorry, when is the, when is this going to the city commission, when they are going to stop going again?
How much is scheduled for District fifty commission?
Uh, twenty-two forty-three is tentatively scheduled to go to the city commission on October fifth, Monday, October fifth, two thousand twenty.
Got that, Mr. Markport? October?
Okay.
Yes, sir, please.
My name is James Hill, eight forty-six, Tenth Avenue East. I did have my major question answered because I had no idea what this project was and at the risk of sounding uninformed, I wanted to find out what it was all about. I understand, um, what the assessment is at this point. However, um, there was something that was brought up that kind of has a concern to me where he said that every unit was a one unit. Whether it was two and a half acres or a quarter acre, in my opinion, that doesn't sound like a real fair assessment.
And just to set the record straight, James, um, not, I mean, if it's a two-acre lot, a single-family lot, it'll get an equivalent unit, which is one. If it's over that, it'll get more, but we have to
Does the not say that whether it's a two and a half acre or whatever size the lot was, it's one assessment unit?
Up to two.
Up to two acres. Anything over that gets more assessments.
But even at that, two acres versus a quarter acre lot or whatever, would that be a, I, I would question how that would be in a fair assessment. I've, tell me if I'm wrong.
Again, it's a two-acre lot with a single family home on it, so.
Okay. You know, if I happen to live in a twin home and I've lived there since nineteen seventy-eight and I've been assessed for Ninth, Ninth Street probably five or six times. And I'm, quite frankly, I'm getting tired of paying for all the improvements for people to go drive by thirty-five, forty miles an hour past my house. So that's getting a little frustrating and you know what I mean? When I moved there, it was not an arterial road. And, um, you know, when it comes to these arterial roads, in my opinion, if you're talking about Ninth Street and Thirteenth Avenue, that should be spread over the entire city. Because everybody in this town, in my opinion, has got to use that street at some point. Just
Just the one that weighs my weight.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to District twenty-two forty-three? One more time, anybody else wish to speak to District twenty-two forty-three? Since none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen?
There's been a lot of questions about, uh, who in the city is going to be able to use this improvement. And I, I just wanted to make a comment about some of the discussion that we have at meetings before, um, this public hearing. Is that if there's an arterial road that is being improved across town, we do stick to that guidelines of a half mile like Dustin had talked about in the beginning. So even though it's widely used, someone across town, um, will get charged only a half mile on each side for that improvement and not be charged for this. So if, uh, if we start charging, uh, or assessing everybody throughout the city, um, then the process that we had started in the beginning is not fair. And so this, um, policy that we have about the half mile makes this process fair. In, in my opinion.
I'm looking for a motion. Unless you, uh, to comment, Robin, you can tell me?
I don't know that I have any comments I could add.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh,
I make a motion to approve twenty-two forty-three.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, moving on to District twenty-two forty-four, Cheyenne Street, Thirteenth Avenue West to Beaton Drive. Dustin?
Oh, thanks again, Mr. Chairman. So District twenty-two forty-four was the first phase of the Cheyenne Street reconstruction project extending from Thirteenth Avenue down to Beaton Drive. Again, it's another, uh, regional assessment district boundary, it's an arterial roadway. And I apologize here, I'm just trying to get through to that map. Okay, here we go. So the assessment district boundary here extends roughly a mile in each direction. Again, terminating at Thirteenth Avenue, we did not go, uh, to the north. Uh, and that south boundary is the interstate. As, uh, the, the reason for not going north of Thirteenth Avenue, uh, once Cheyenne Street is reconstructed north of Thirteenth Avenue, uh, properties on the south side will not have to help pay for that, uh, improvement district, or at least, uh, based on our current assessment policies that we have in place today. Uh, again, this, uh, project, um, you know, kind of an urban reconstruction of an arterial roadway. So I probably won't get into too much of, of the detail, uh, until specific questions come up. Um, the assessment was levied on an equivalent unit basis, again, so very similar, um, district as the Nineteen Thirteenth District. Little, uh, more expensive on this one, so the, the dollar amount is higher. But, um, I think at that point, I'll, or at this point, I'll throw it back over to the chairman and answer any questions.
And Mr. Chair, um, Mr. Chair, for just for public information, the city, so the city had, uh, contributed about one point two million dollars of sale tax to this project. Originally, it was about eight point nine million, bought it down with one point two. There was some savings in the contingency. There was, uh, reduction in the amount of contingency that wasn't spent of about seventeen thousand. Uh, and then when the city sold bonds, it got a premium and it applied that premium to the district and that was about, uh, three hundred thousand dollars of bond premium applied to it. So there was city funds to buy down the district.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll open up the public, uh, hearing portion of it. Anybody want to, uh, here to speak to twenty-two forty-four?
Well, evening commissioners and such. David Zuppi, seven oh seven, fifteenth Avenue East is the property. I think maybe you're hearing a common theme tonight about maybe they could use some improvement. Maybe the numbers, when you have to explain through formulas three different times, how you get yours, an assessment that maybe it has people, the, the property owners and business owners wondering about this process. Twenty-eight years, I served in the service of the United States Air Force, lived in eight states. This is the only one, as a property owner, I'm doing the special assessments and I think I know something about math and what have you, but I, I'm at a loss sometimes figuring one moment percent, it's a half-mile square district. No, now it's a mile wide, only east-west for this one in particular. And I just have to stop and say, okay. Is, is there a better process? So I'm not going to talk about my property and leave, I know you've, you've got a lot on your plate and such here, but have you ever heard of a capital improvement program? As a city engineer, I'm hoping that Dustin can say, yeah, I probably have. That's how a lot of municipalities do it. City, a city engineer looks at the whole municipality and says, we've got so many miles of roads. We have water, wastewater discharge or, or stormwater discharge, common areas. And usually you go through, you know, public, uh, uh, purpose bonds, which is a way of actually raising revenues and such. But it's throughout the whole city. Or you have, or what is it called, uh, voter approval, general obligation, holy cow. Voter approval, general obligation, bonds. They actually take it to the voter and say, this is our municipality, this is our West Fargo. There's something that's touching on us. We're not going to set up toll roads on Cheyenne or Ninth for people for, for using, but I'm thinking there's probably a better way of funding these public service projects than this algorithm that you call in special assessments. Now, whether it's not fair to folks in the past, and I appreciate, Commissioner, what you're saying, that's true. Those have already done it, but I'm, I'm more in the bet. The voters and property owners would accept and embrace an idea here saying, it's roads, people are using it, trucks are using it, all of us are using it. Whether we use it on a lot or a little, it's for the betterment of West Fargo. And I trust the engineers and, and such and our public works, uh, uh, folks and administration to do it. I don't care if it's, some of the ways of doing it are gas taxes, you put a little tax on, you can have a, a, a special option, sales tax, what have you. I'm just thinking of a way of spreading it out, but having it all encompassed so folks know, and this is usually done, not after the fact, it's done before the fact on these, on these revenue-generated approaches. Okay, I've used up enough of your time. I just, I just, as I sit here and listen, it's like, I think in my heart, there's got to be a better way of doing this and a, and a formula that property owners can understand. Thank you, Commissioner, for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to District twenty-two forty-four? Yes, sir?
My name's Mark Q D. I live at seventeen twenty Thirteenth Street East. Again, gentlemen, it's saying, there's got to be a better way to do this. I also was in the Air Force for twenty years. I've owned four homes till I moved here. I had no idea what a special was, no, no clue. And, um, I had worked with somebody that moved here and they didn't know. If you, it's, the one thing about a special, it's a way to hide the true cost of living here. Because you look at websites, you look at, um, reorder sites, none of them will tell you the specials. You have to look at it. My daughter and my son were looking for a home. They found one at old two fifty, that's a good price. Wait a minute, look at what the specials are. So I believe there's also a better way. This was an education for me because I learned how, I thought it was always just a mile circle. I didn't know there was, they broke it down to half mile or a mile. Um, but I just think, I think there's a better way to do it. And these main artery roads, like the gentleman back here was saying, I don't, I don't think it's fair that you just take a small group of people. They're going to pay for it when I work with a bunch of people that come this way all the time and never, it's got to be a citywide thing. It can't just, and it's great that there was some funding that, you know, brought down the cost, you know, that came in, but it's got to be a better way to do this. I don't think it'll ever change. It's too far, we're too far into this to change it, but I think there is a better way. And I thank you guys.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? I could, uh, just a couple of comments. I, I certainly appreciate all the comments. I just want to make a couple, uh, points. Uh, one, we do have a working capital improvement program, um, and special assessments are one of the funding mechanisms that is used to finance infrastructure projects. Um, that information, again, is, is available on our website. Uh, and, and two, uh, just want to point out that each improvement district is unique. We do have a special assessment policy, again, available on our website that
that explains some typical situation, you know, at least the foundation for going through a special assessment process. But each improvement district is unique. And so that's where I don't want to get hung up on things like it's always a mile each way or it's always a half a mile each way. Sometimes the boundary of the improvement is not related to a half or, you know, half mile or a mile. I just kind of want to make everyone aware that as we go through the rest of these improvement districts, they do change. And then there are several improvements that the city does throughout the year that are not funded with special assessments. And again, that information is available in our capital improvement program. And again, all of this is available on our city website, so. Thank you.
I just want to make one comment and then I'll have more public comment. And, you know, I started as a city administrator for the city of West Fargo 20 years ago. And the first meeting I went to was on special assessments and how can we get rid of them? That was 20 years ago and we're still assessing them. And I think the city has met with Fargo Moorhead every couple of years to discuss special assessments. You know, they're very unpopular, to say the least. No one's came up with a better way to do it yet. Like that one gentleman said, there is a lot of options out there. They just, you can't agree on. But this commission has no say in special assessments other than we get a dollar amount and we assess it against the properties. The theory behind specials is done at the city commission level. They're the only people who are empowered to change the process of assessments or not assessments. Again, as John pointed out early on in the meeting, our job is to take the dollar amount that the city gives us in the district that's outlined and find a fair and equitable way to distribute those costs. So I encourage everybody that's out there that doesn't like special assessments to attend your city commission meeting. They're the only people who can change them. Yes, sir. That's the next city commission meeting. Not the assessments who will be heard at.
And if you have an idea on what that change would be or that better process, then they should hear it.
Yep.
And they do meet every first and third Monday of every month. Most, most West Fargo Commissioners are very available to talk to the public.
Yes, sir.
I'm Russell Fletchak, 484 C, 19th Avenue West. And I'd like to know what the total cost of that project, our project is and how much is paid by special assessments on that one. I couldn't hear the gentleman here.
Sure, I'll try to speak up. So the total cost of the improvement all in was $8,989,221. The contingencies, which are programmed in costs, came in lower than expected. So that was a reduction of $17,810. The city contributed $1.2 million or $1.272,96 million in sales tax. There was some additional city funds for a utility portion of it of $21,000. And then the city utilized the bond premium. So when the city goes out and sells bonds, it sometimes gets a premium. It did in this case. The city's policy always has been to apply that bond premium to buy down each district. So that some cities will take the bond premium and use it for other things. West Fargo's policy has always been to benefit, to the benefit of the district. So it bought it down from a total of $8.9, $8.9 to $7,375 of special assessments.
So not, not near the reduction that they had on District 2243 then, where you came down a lot more.
I think it's, as the city engineer said, each project has different allocations. One thing, if you, if you have the ability to either go online or attend the special assessment commission meetings as part of a presentation for each improvement district, the city engineer presents a pie chart that shows what the proposed funding is for each district. And a couple of years ago, the city had staff, including myself, put on a series of forums. I think there was four or five public forums all over the city to gather input. And one of them was to have more information at the beginning of the process for what's being paid for in each district. And so the city engineer puts together, I can't remember what you call it exactly, Dustin, but it's a pie chart and it just has sort of where all the city funds are coming from. And the city commission ultimately makes the decision on whether to go forward with the district or not.
Okay, thank you very much. And for engineer then, like, we have condos or townhouses or whatever at 484 19th Avenue West for an Elmwood Park Place. Can you tell me what, are we a 1.0 per unit or are we a .5? I spoke to a Brandon on July 23rd, 2018. I don't know, are you Brandon?
No, sir, I'm, my name's Dustin Scott.
Does he still work here?
He works with Moore Engineering as a, he's a consulting engineer with Moore.
Okay, so he estimated then that our condo units would probably be a half equivalent where a home was a one. What did you end up, what did we end up on Elmwood Park Place for our units?
Well, I'm not 100% sure on the amount of equivalent units. I can certainly look that up. I did see here, your pending assessment is $1,349. So I'd say it's about half, maybe .4.
1,000, how much?
Your, $1,349.74 is what's on the current list.
So you think we might be about a .4, so homes are...
.4? .5, so you got a .5.
It is a .5. So homes are paying $2,700 for this assessment? Oh, it's small. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to District?
My name is James, I'm still Steve Markford at 725 15th Avenue East. And back to the same thing we talked about here and some of the things are here. And I know you guys are in a tough spot, you can't change things. But once again, you know, 269949, so now I'm over off the website. I'm at 370560 is what I'm going to assess my property. I'm getting that double whammy. I don't know that I'm within a half mile of Cheyenne. Like I might be outside that, but I'm still getting on it. But of course, I'm in that district. Once again, I think that's something that needs to be looked at, guys. It's absolutely crazy what's going on. I have been in the city commission meeting and I'll tell you guys as well, and I will go there again and tell them this. But I think what happens, and these two fine gentlemen, once again, thanks for your service. But as they said, should something happen before a special, yeah, it's got to go to the developers in those properties that have to pay more money out of it. Because those developers are taking the money and running. And I'm not against the developers, that's great. But West Fargo is no longer a little sleepy community. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be happened here, which we're seeing, it's not just in specials here, but it's in our garbage, it's in our sewer, it's in our water, everything that needs to take place. Those things need to happen, I think, in that situation. Where, I don't know how it happens and where it's going to change that, but I will be at the city commission meeting and after working up and I will talk to them about that. And I have in the past. The reason I said is I'm here is because they told me I have to come here. But I already realized nothing's going to happen here, so I'll go back to that meeting. So, thank you.
My name's Curtis Nass, I live at 876 Elmwood Place. We moved over to West Fargo in, two years ago, from April. Looking at houses along the way, ready to purchase houses, seeing all the nice prices in the new development areas. You pull up more information on the house and you see a 220 budget and whatnot. And then you see $40,000 to $60,000 in specials attached to it. Turns your prices to buy a home significantly higher. So we ended up looking around, dropping specials, seeing where we could find areas that we didn't have the specials still stay within our budget. We purchased the house at Elm, ah, 876 Elmwood Place. We had just over $2,000 in specials, thinking manageable. So we'll be able to do this, we're just fine. There were no roads that were destroyed, there was no major issue in the area. I knew nothing was going to be coming from that. But then the Cheyenne to Beaton project was probably already started. I had no idea what was going on with West Fargo, no idea where to go to put my information in. So we come over there and we see the project start. And I start looking at more information. I find all the information on the project and start looking through everything that's going on with that. Now, the 269949 saying, okay, a single person home, family of six, going to be seven. Okay, we're not going to come up with $2,700. So it's like, okay, great, you can pay that over 25 years, with interest, of course. Now it's $4,159 total over 25 years for this project. And project after project after project just continues to build and build and build. The assessments are passed down from homeowner to homeowner. They never get paid off unless you stay in your house 25 years. So I understand you're just, you're putting the values in the homes. Completely understand that. This is probably a conversation that's a bit after the fact. But, so with the cost of going out and purchasing a house, the specials, there should never be $40,000 in specials on the house. That should be on the price of the total house. A $220,000 house, a $40,000 in specials is a $260,000 house, not a $220,000 house. So that actually is lowering your home values, keeping values lower. And the specials are kind of that underlying cost that nobody really knows about coming out here. Because I do, I've asked all my friends that have lived in multiple different cities across the country. They don't have specials, they don't even know what they are. So it's like, what are we doing here that everywhere else doesn't seem to need to do? I mean Fargo's been railed on specials. And I think West Fargo's going to be right behind them over and over and over again. Some of the specials that get applied to these houses. And then the other part with this one, when a big project happens and the districts are there, are the residents covering the same percentage of said project total cost? Or are they covering where that final number just happens to fall? So say, say a project costs, one project's costing $6 million, next project costs $15 million, next project costs $20 million. And are the residents just figured in at like a 25% part of this as a pie? Or are they, well, let's pull the money from here, here, here. Well, we got 15 million left and then that goes to the residents.
The funding portion is done at the city commission level? And I'm not trying to pass a buck or anything, but that is done when they start a project. The city commission says, you know, what's the project going to cost? The engineer says it's going to be a $10 million project. And they go, well, should we apply sales tax or something? Their decision entirely, how they want to fund it, do they bond it, do they not bond it? Those financing decisions are done at the city level. And I know I'm repeating myself. When it comes to this commission, they say, take this many dollars and assess it over this many properties. And we use our formulas that we, that we follow from year to year to year on the assessment committee, that most cities follow the same assessment. If they use assessments, they follow the same thing.
I'm more wondering, do the residents get assessed around the same percentage when it comes to the different projects? Or is it all, it could be anywhere?
It could be anywhere from the residents are going to pay 100% of the cost to they could pay almost nothing. It's up to the city commission, how many other funds. You know, there's factors that, is it a federal project? Can you get federal dollars for it? That'll lower the assessments. Is there sales tax available that the city wants to apply? That'll lower the assessments. But those decisions are all made at the city commission level when they start the project. Timing deal, this process is, when they develop a project that was done several years ago, they publish their notices in the papers and they do their legal requirements. When it gets to here, the costs are well-known and we just assess on a formula basis to the residents that are there.
Yeah, and see, that's where with us moving in here just two years ago, it's like this project was already started down that line. It was probably already ready to roll forward. We just had no idea. There was no notification and I don't know how many people nowadays buy a paper. So, I mean, I know I haven't bought a paper in years and I don't bother. That's a generational thing. I mean, some people love a paper, the rest of us don't. And you're going to see a lot more of that. So the different communication methods to get things out. I know I'm now on Nextdoor app, I see your guys' posts and whatnot. I'm starting to catch on to some of that stuff. But I mean, putting something in a paper, you're completely missing the younger generation in West Fargo. The, you know, future Commissioners of West Fargo. And because they're not going to be seeing it. They're not going to be purchasing the papers and whatnot in order to see all that stuff. The other thing that I was going to ask is when these get sent out for bids, after the project is in line and the bid comes in, do you know if residents have a chance to come back over and say, no, we don't want that project to go through after the thing's been bid?
Again, I'll have the attorney speak to the legalese on protesting out a project.
So to answer your question directly, after the bids come in, no, that is a commission decision. The opportunity to protest the creation of a district comes with a street district. They create the district, they'll direct the engineer to prepare what's referred to as the engineer's report, which includes an estimate of the cost of the improvement along with potential other sources. That was the pie chart I was referring to. That's contained within the engineer's report to the commission. If they find that report satisfactory, then they will publish what's referred to as a resolution of necessity. I recognize the newspaper issue, that's required by state law that we publish in the newspaper. One of the outcomes of the public forums was to use different mediums. And so we've tried to publish as much as we can, the city website, newspaper and through letters. And everybody just frankly has an opinion about which medium is better. Then it's really a generational thing. Some say newspaper is the best, some say Facebook is the best, some say websites.
You know what, I'll pay for a stamp over and over and over again if it gives me a voice against $2,700.
But what happened, what happens then is that the resolution of necessity, there's a public hearing and the property owners, remember it's property owner or property, not specific people, the properties can protest out an improvement district. So if a majority of the property within the district says no to the improvement, then the district doesn't go forward. Now, if the protest isn't sufficient, the city commission goes forward, puts it out for public bid. Under state law, they're required to accept, or not required to accept, but they can only accept the lowest responsible bidder. They still have an opportunity to reject it and I have seen it where the bids come in high and the city commission says, no, we're not going to go forward with it, that's too expensive. That's a city commission decision whether to proceed with the bids. And that's why I did, I did mention that the city commission meetings, they're first and third Mondays of every month. That's where a lot of the decisions are made. I think that West Fargo Commissioners do a great job of being very approachable by people. And so, you know, if you're at a commission meeting and there's a, you know, a bid, that's where you find out most of your information about what's going on. They start at 5:30 and at that point, once the contract is awarded, we go through and calculate all the costs because there could be land acquisition costs. Sometimes you need land, there can be some soft costs. There could be any number of studies that go with it. Those costs are finalized, the city bonds for it. And that's where the special assessment commission comes in then. After all the money is spent, tallied up, they get a number to specially assess out. And so that's, that's why you keep hearing this refrain that, you know, we don't have any control over what the total amount of the cost is. We don't have any control over whether this was a good project or a bad project. Those are policy level decisions at the city commission made by elected officials.
Commissioner, President, can I make one more comment? On this particular project for Cheyenne Street, we spent, I would say approximately two years with having community meetings all over to inform people what the plan is, to get their ideas, to get their thoughts. We sent out letters, we sent, we had all kinds of information going up because we wanted people to be involved in the process. And I thought we did a really good job getting them involved in the process. But once all that was done and the project started going, I mean, it just takes so long. And that must be, you must have came in right after that. Because we had billboards up, we had all kinds of information. And we, very good attendance at our meetings that we would have as well, which is very nice. So I do appreciate it and we, we're continuing to work on getting better.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the whole thing. It's like, you go in to purchase a house and one of your main things is, oh, there's just over $2,000 in specials. Then all of a sudden, it's like, here's a project that's happening and it's over double now with another $2,700 added to the top of that. Which honestly, it'll be $4,159 for me because I can't pay $2,700 out of my pocket. So that's a lot of money. So, that's a lot of money for a family of seven. So, moving into West Fargo, you know, quiet little community. And I mean, from the specials, if it was my cul-de-sac, the smaller roads on the inside. That things were, you know, not an arterial road. I'd be like, okay, it's, it's in the neighborhood, fixing up the neighborhood. And I probably wouldn't be as vocal about it. But being an arterial road that honestly, the only reason why this arterial road probably had to get expanded. Was because of the expansion south of I-94. Uh, that doesn't affect me. So, that is a project that would only affect the people that are expanding down south. The developers who, uh, built all the houses down there. The businesses that decided to build down there. And I know the city's growing, that's perfectly fine. But there was no, when there was nothing down there, Cheyenne is perfectly fine the way it was. And, I mean, now it's expanded, it handles more traffic. That certainly helps hornbuckers. It helps the lights, it helps the, uh, other businesses that are going up, down, down south of I-94. Certainly doesn't help us. So, but, thank you.
Again, I'll encourage you to attend the next city commission meeting and.
I will be.
What's your concerns to them, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to district, um, we're still on twenty-two forty-four? Anybody else wish to speak to twenty-two forty-four? One more time, anyone else wish to speak to twenty-two forty-four? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Any comments or questions or?
And I think if I could ditto what Commissioner Shealy said about the last district, about the, you know, the fairness. We're kinda, you know, working with what we have. You know, personally, I did question, you know, the, the district boundaries. Unfortunately, that's not something that we, you know, have authority to change, you know, at this point or, well, at all. But, um, you know, knowing that there might be something potential coming down for those that are north of Thirteenth and all that. Kinda helps, uh, make things a bit more fair. And I definitely, you know, I was kinda in the same boat five years ago looking for a home too. So I definitely, you know, empathize with all that, so. But, um, given what we have here and kinda what our, our job is to do, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
You move in second, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on to, uh, item seven, District twenty-two fifty-one. Thirteenth Avenue East, Twelfth Street East to Forty-Fifth Street North. Dustin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, another arterial roadway regional assessment district, I pulled up the map here. Uh, this was a project actually, um, administered by the city of Fargo. However, the, uh, costs were tracked for the West Fargo specific portion, which is, uh, between Seventeenth Street and Ninth Street here. Uh, so, uh, in this case, the assessment district boundary goes half a mile to the north up to Seventh Avenue. It does go a mile to the south down to the interstate. And again, was assessed on an equivalent unit basis. So with that, I will turn it back over to the chairman and answer any questions.
And, Mr. Chair, there was a contribution from the, other contributions of, uh, five-hundred thousand dollars. And the B, bond premium was one-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand. So there's approximately seven-hundred thousand dollars of other funds to buy the district down.
Okay.
Oh, and, Mr. Chair, I probably should mention too, I, I didn't cover it in the past, but, um, in this particular case here, there's, I, I did bring up a map. Showing a blue highlighted area and a, and a purple highlighted area. Uh, they did receive additional assessments beyond just an equivalent unit. We did assess this blue highlighted area, uh, two-hundred dollars per front foot of their property. The purple area, we charged them an additional fifty dollars per front foot of their property. So I just wanted to point out that it wasn't just an equivalent unit basis.
Okay, yep, I remember that discussion. Okay. Oh, with that, we'll open up the public hearing on twenty-two fifty-one. Does anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir.
I just have a question, and maybe I don't understand it. But you said it went to Forty-Fifth?
Yes, sir.
Is it, where does it go into Fargo and if it is into Fargo, why are we paying for what would be Fargo's assessment?
Absolutely, good question, sir. So, I'm gonna zoom in, I hope you can see the map here.
Yep.
Do you see all of these, uh, magenta lines? These are property boundaries. There's nothing over in here where the city of Fargo limits are.
Okay.
So the project itself, I'm gonna actually get to Thirteenth Avenue here, sorry. The project itself, uh, does extend down into Forty-Fifth. However, the, the costs of the project were tracked such that the city of Fargo is paying their half-mile of project. And the city of West Fargo is paying their half-mile of project.
Okay, so they were assessed.
Correct, well Fargo, Fargo is, I don't, I'm not sure if they've set up an assessment district or not, I, I believe they did, but.
Okay, but they're paying for, they're paying for that half-mile and then we, so it's a combination of the two cities?
That's correct. In fact, I can, uh, pull open a description here. The total project cost was roughly twelve million dollars. The amount of this assessment is four-point-eight million. The city share was five-hundred thousand. Other funds, six point, roughly six-point-seven. And those other funds were the city of Fargo. So the city of Fargo actually paid, uh, more than fifty percent of this project.
And, seeing that information, that I, I can never find that information. And so, you, the question is that you're thinking, oh, we're paying for what Fargo did and not realizing that it was split, split between the two.
Absolutely.
And so, okay, thank you, that answers my question.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to District twenty-two fifty-one? One more time, anyone else wish to speak to District twenty-two fifty-one? If not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the commission.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty-two fifty-one. I will second.
I'll move in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item eight, District twenty-two fifty-three, Goldenwood and Pinewood area overlay. Dustin?
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, here we go, I'm gonna pull up the map. This one is a, uh, a street overlay job, so, uh, it is more of a local assessment district. Uh, I do wanna point out that, as you can see here on the map, there are two different areas. And I apologize again if, if the audience is having difficulty viewing it. Um, one area is in the Goldenwood development, which is just on the north side of Twelfth Avenue. And the other area is known as the Pinewood neighborhood, which is located just off of Main Avenue. Uh, so this, uh, for economies of scale, basically, uh, getting, um, more, uh, more efficiencies with our dollars spent. We combined this into one construction project. Um, however, we do have two different assessment areas. The, um, see, the assessments. I believe we're done. Let me just pull this up. The same summary sheet, it seems to be a good one to write upon here. So the total cost was three-hundred-five thousand dollars. And, um, these were assessed on a, well, it kind of was a combination. Some areas were on an equivalent unit, um, but for the most part, each lot, each residential lot paid the same unless they were a condo association lot. There were a couple other commercial type lots that, that did pay a little higher equivalent unit, so. I guess with that, um, again, all this, all this information is on the website. So, I won't go into too much more detail on that, I'll just leave it on the map and answer any questions you might have.
And with that, we'll open up the public hearing on twenty-two fifty-three. Anybody wish to speak to twenty-two fifty-three? One more time, does anybody wish to speak to twenty-two fifty-three? I say none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen?
Make a motion to approve twenty-two fifty-three. I will second.
I'll move in second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. Item nine, District thirteen oh five, The Wild's Ninth Edition. Dustin?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Wild's Ninth Edition is a little bit of a combination of regional and, and local. Um, but in this case, when I say regional, uh, the boundary is not, uh, as large as it would be for an arterial roadway. Uh, when I say regional, it is more, um, development-wide versus a very specific block or, or two within a development. Uh, The Wild's Ninth Edition is located within the, The Wild's Development, south of Fifty-second Avenue. Um, I'm gonna pull up the assessment map here. And everybody that is within this Wild's Development, south of Fifty-second, it is included in this assessment district boundary. Uh, there are local improvements. So, when we talk about the sewer water and streets that are right directly in front of a home, those are the local improvements. Predominantly made within this gray shaded boundary here, which is The Wild's Ninth Edition. Uh, this improvement district also includes regional improvements to service this entire neighborhood. And those are items like a sanitary sewer lift station, uh, that everyone drains to, uh, stormwater retention ponds. And then, of course, uh, there is a collector roadway Ninth Street West here. So, a combination of, of, of different assessment allocation methods, um, all of it, front foot, square foot, equivalent units. Depending on the, on the type of, of improvement included within this, uh, district, so. Um, and with that, I'll, I'll pause and answer any questions.
Dustin? Uh, seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing to District thirteen oh five. Anybody wish to speak to District thirteen oh five? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Allison Thomas and we're at five-seven-three-two Dev Drive West. Five-seven-three-two.
No, thank you.
Our main concern has been over the quality completion of the jobs that are currently underway. Our backyard faces The Wild South Park, you can see up on the map. Um, we were in the process of communicating with West Fargo Parks throughout the summer. Um, due to portions of the job not being completed. And we had just received an email from the park saying that the contractor is incurring liquidated damages for the failure of the completion of the project. And that the savings would be reflected, um, and the amounts would be reassessed back to the homeowners. And it was during the time we were talking to him about the liquidated damages and how it will be refunded for that portion of the project. That we received this letter saying that there's gonna be a second portion of the project that's gonna be completed on the other side of our house. So many of our concerns come from the specifics that were listed in there. For example, um, excavation of the pond, three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. A hundred thousand dollars for bubblers for the pond, those are not present currently. Um, twenty-six thousand dollars for topsoil replacement. While we watched the entire time this summer, they completed The Wild South Park and only half of the grass topsoil was replaced. In the manner that it was taken apart and it's still, still not complete. It's mainly, um, overgrown with weeds. So, just looking at some of these prices, cleaning, one thousand dollars. Almost every ti- every day I go back there on a walk, there's metal, uh, metal poles laying on the sidewalks, garbage. Uh, there is another one in here. Included in the excavation of the pond, three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. I run on the path almost every day back there and the soil erosion covers the path almost weekly. Every time it rains, the whole thing washes out over the sidewalks. So you see little kids on bikes and rollerblades, not able to pass, moms with strollers. So our main frustration is coming from the seven-point-eight million dollar project and the thirty-plus thousand dollars that each of the homeowners are paying for the project. But who ensures the quality completion of these projects? Um, how do we know that our thirty thousand dollars that we're paying to have this beautiful park in our backyard is gonna be completed? Quality?
Well, to answer your question, who's responsible for the project is the city, if it's a city project. And, um, again, uh, as far as the construction of it or that, as a commission here, we don't deal in any of that. We usually get the projects when they're done, so, um, you know, and again, we just get the dollar amount. So again, if there is issues with, um, construction, we have nothing to do with that because we didn't issue the contract, the city did. So it would be their questions. As far as reassessing the project, you said that right off the bat, is that the Park District that's reassessing there?
Yeah, they said that, the savings will be reflected on all of the homeowners due to the incurred liquidated damages for failure to complete the project.
So, so if I could, that was the district that was assessed. Uh, so there's two, two jurisdictions here. You have the Park District that assesses for the park. Uh, that was reflected in a reduc- reduced, uh, assessment that went through the commission at the last meeting. So they've already reflected that in the proposed assessment for the Park District. Tonight is the city project, which would be the roads and the infrastructure. I don't know, was the pond included in that? Okay, so that would, that would include the pond. Um, to answer your question about quality control, the contracts include what is referred to as a substantial completion. And then a punch list of items. Uh, substantial completion means that it's generally fit, like you can walk on the bike path or you can drive down the road or the pond will hold water. But some of the, uh, quality control issues you're speaking of really go to a punch list item. And I don't know if the punch list has been completed on this or if that's been identified. Uh, the city engineer would be able to tell you where that's at, as to status.
Um, and unfortunately, I, I honestly don't know the exact status. I do know that there have been some issues raised over the last couple months. Um, and I'm not exactly sure if they're tied to District thirteen oh five or, there's, there's a few different open contracts out there. Um, and I can tell you that our, we do have representatives from the engineering office that are taking notes on this. And, and we can certainly schedule a time to talk with you, um, further on, on the construction-related questions you have.
To my understanding, liquidated damages are assessed per day they go past project completion, correct?
I can, uh, gen- generally speaking, liquidated damages are assessed, there are certain contractual requirements when you can assess liquidated damages and when you can't. Uh, that can get into what's allowed for working days and what's not allowed for working days. Uh, liquidated damages are sometimes negotiated as part of change orders or completion dates. And so, in general, you're correct, but each contract, it's specific to how much liquidated damages would be assessed.
Okay, I was wondering, cause you said it, it's already been determined how much will be refunded, but the project is still underway, so.
Well, let me clarify, there's two, a couple districts. So the Park District, they've already determined the amount that would be assessed. And there's no, I don't know who you spoke to at the Park District, but you won't get refund in the sense that you get a check in the mail kind of refund.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that would be reflected in a reduced amount of the total assessment. And that already went through the special assessment commission. And we'll go to the Park District, I don't think they've scheduled the hearing on when they'll assess, do the final assessment. But that would have already been reflected in the assessment amount. Uh, as with the city engineer for these other projects, I don't know what specific project is out there and I don't know. Uh, uh, which punch list items are remaining open and which aren't. Cause there's multiple improvement districts out there, cause it is a new development.
Okay. Um, how will the citizens be informed of the amount that we'll receive on our assessments due to the damages?
I would, well, what I would say is, why don't you give your number, uh, and name to, uh, probably somebody from more engineering or Dustin? And we'll get a meeting scheduled to answer your specific questions, cause it's hard to answer to that level of detail at a, a public hearing.
Okay, so, so there's no line of communication to the property owners in that development? As to how they will receive cutbacks on their specials due to the project?
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, uh, we don't have, that district regarding the Park District is not here tonight. And without having the file in front of me and the information regarding the specific liquidated damages. I, I don't have the information to answer your question exactly and we don't wanna give you miscommunications. And so, just like with everything else, if you have specific questions, we can arrange to set up a meeting to answer those specific questions. Cause, uh, the Park improvements are part of a separate district that went through it last, uh, last month's, uh, meeting. Tonight it's thirteen oh five, uh, which is a slightly different district, it wouldn't be the Park improvements.
Okay, uh, disregarding the specific amount, I'm just wondering in general, like line of communication. So, had I not been on the phone back and forth with the Park District all summer, we would've had no idea what was happening with the project. We weren't informed any other way. So, in what way are the property owners communicated when these such? So, in what way are the property owners communicated when these situations arise?
I can make a comment here. The fact that the Park District is doing this, they're a totally separate governing body, you would have to ask them what their process is, because we have no control over their processes and how they inform people, or how they manage their liquidated damages, any of that type of thing. We, they're just, it's, they're totally separate governing bodies, so unfortunately, that's...
Okay.
Yeah, they, they should be able to give you some more information on that.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, just one other comment, a lot of property owners have mentioned this tonight, but room for improvement. In the letter, it doesn't state the amount that you're going to be assessed. So you receive the letter in the mail saying you're going to be incurring more special assessments, but the amount is not listed, and it took almost an hour digging through documents on websites just to find the amount that will potentially be assessed, assessed at. So I can't imagine how challenging that may be for some property owners to sit for hours and hours and hours digging through files on computers, just to try to see how much they're going to be assessed on their property, why that amount can't be included in the document that's mailed out.
Thank you for that comment. Actually, that is something of staff that, through comments of citizens calling us, that we do plan on adjusting our letter. We thought that just putting all the links in would help, but we do agree that there's a better way to do it, and we will be improving the letter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to add, Jerry Wallace is in the back, he's also a staff engineer here with the city, and he can certainly get in touch with you tomorrow, or whenever you got time.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to District 1305? Anybody else wish to speak to District 1305? Sensing none, we'll close the public hearing portion, bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to approve 1305.
I will second.
Move in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item 10, District 1315, Westview Third Edition. Dustin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a very local development project. I've got the map here on the screen, let me just make it so you can see it. Just a continuation of the Westview Fourth Development, which is just to the west of the Cheyenne High School, between 4th Street and 7th Street East. The assessments were levied on a, following our assessment policy, there's some front foot, square foot, and equivalent unit type stuff, based on whether it was a sewer, water, or street. So, we'll pause there and answer any questions.
Okay. Thanks, Dustin. We'll open up the public hearing on District 1315. Anybody wish to speak to 1315? One more time, anybody wish to speak to 1315? Sensing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission.
I'll make a motion to approve 1315.
I will second.
Move in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. In the final district tonight, District 1319, Gellers and Meadow Ridge. Dustin?
All right, thanks. Once again, Mr. Chair, District 1319 is a little more of a regional boundary, again, it is relating to sewer improvements that were made in this area that benefit a larger area than just a local neighborhood, so. The costs were assessed on an equivalent unit basis, based on those who benefited. I do want to pull up an additional map here, this, this assessment boundary is larger than the properties that were actually receiving an assessment. For example, the Somerset Development here did actually, did not receive an assessment, so this color coded map here that I'm bringing up will better reflect who, within this district boundary, did receive an assessment. So, with that, I will pause and answer any questions.
Any questions for you, Dustin? That's good. We will open up the public portion of District 1319. Anybody wish to speak to District 1319? Anybody wish to speak to 1319? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and bring it back to the commission.
Make a motion to approve District 1319.
Second.
Move in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. And with that, as there's no more business before us, we'll adjourn to a special assessment committee. Thank you, everybody.